You know, thirty or forty-five more seconds and then we'll, we'll get going with the program. All right. Okay, well, the participant list is freezing a little bit, so more people will come on, but my name is Marcus Monday. I'm the Executive Director of the Coalition of Communities of Color here in the region. I'm also a proud member of the Washington County Racial Equity Collaborative, which is a group of five organizations operating in Washington County from Biennestar to Arlante Mujeres, to the Vision Action Network, to the Asian and Pacific American Network of Oregon, and it also includes CCC. I'm also tonight's facilitator. This is the third of four community investment conversations meant to introduce the county residents to the budget, to the budget process, and then to elicit feedback from the residents on, on your preferences, and then to make sure that your commissioners, several of whom are on this call, that your commissioners know what you as county residents are thinking and what you want to have them do on your behalf. So in addition to that, I wanted to share a few logistics with you. Tonight, you're going to hear from your board chair, your District Three Commissioner. You're going to hear from the Chief Financial Officer of the Board. You're going to hear about the budget, and there will be a question and answer, and that'll take up about our first hour. And then in the second half of the program, you're going to hear some comparisons between budget and household. We're going to do some polling so we can get some specifics about what you think as residents. We're going to share those results, and along the way, both in the budget presentation and later, there will be opportunities for you to engage with your opinions, your questions, your comments, and your commissioners are very anxious to hear that information. So there are a couple other things you might see on your screen at the bottom, something where you can raise your hand. There will be opportunities throughout the program for you to raise your hand and you to be heard. And our, our county clerk, Kevin Moss, will be responding to those raising hands. You will also see a Q and A, a question and answer function at the bottom of your screen. If you have questions along the way or comments, but particularly questions that you would like to get an answer on, then plop your question into the Q and A, and someone from staff or your commissioners or your CFO may respond to your question. So with that said, I would also like to remind you all that we have ASL, American Sign Language Interpretation, tonight, which you should see on your screen at some point. And there is also a Spanish language channel where if you would prefer to hear this whole program, the next two hours in Spanish, I would encourage you to go there if that is your preferred choice. And with that, I would like to introduce Karina Soriano, who will do some translation for, for us and help you get into the Spanish channel if that is what you need. Karina?
Buenas tardes. Bienvenidos a todos. Hay interpretación en español disponible para la conversación de esta noche. Busque en la parte derecha de, de su pantalla una imagen de un globo. Vaya ahí y ahí va a poder escoger interpretación. Si usted está usando su teléfono, el símbolo de tres puntos va a ser a donde va a ir para hacer clic y para que pueda tener el en español. Solamente seleccione español. También tendrá la opción de silenciar al que está hablando el inglés. Luego podrá escuchar la interpretación en español durante el resto de la reunión. Si en algún momento desea hacer una pregunta o hacer un comentario, puede hacerlo, y un entrepeté repiterá su pregunta en inglés para que todos los demás la puedan escuchar. Si tiene alguna pregunta, abajo para seleccionar la mano. Gracias.
Gracias, Karina. So we're just going to go ahead and get going. We're, we're here today to learn the basics of the county's budget overall, and then talk about the specific proposed budget for the, for the fiscal year 2021, as prepared by the county staff. Further, we are also here to help share and hopefully align the values and priorities of you, the county's residents, with the county's commissioners. Where should they be investing more? Where should we be moving money from? You know, the, the thing to remember is that budgets are planning documents. But as COVID taught us, plans change. So we want to use this exercise to share the budget and to make sure that everybody on the county is aligned with where Washington County is going. And so I'm just going to run through a very few quick couple of slides. And so I would ask for the next slide, and we'll talk about a little bit of the rules of the road tonight. So next slide, please, Kevin. Thank you. So you, you've seen the dates. We're at the third meeting today, November eighteenth. There is one more, so on Saturday morning. So if you don't get your questions answered, or if you don't feel that you had an opportunity to speak, there will be one more opportunity before this is over. Next slide. And, and for tonight, and even if you come Saturday, just please remember to stay engaged. Please listen to understand. Speak, please speak your truth responsibly and express your values without diminishing the values of others. Look, it's tough to talk about money, so expect a little discomfort and have compassion for different opinions. And please, accept non-closure. These exercises, these conversations, they're just one step of the process. There'll be a lot more opportunities to engage in the process, just one step. Next slide, please. The guidelines for engagement tonight, as I mentioned, the first part of the program will be a Budget 101. It's going to be an overview by the county's Chief Financial Officer, Jack Leong, and then there will be time set aside in his program for Q and A. And also during the discussion portions of the program, I'm going to try to ensure that people with questions are provided with a two-minute opportunity to speak. That's kind of how the board meetings generally work, but it's only two minutes because we want to hear from as many of you residents as possible. So please try to adhere to that time and be respectful of, of your fellow residents, but we want to get all the questions answered, so please use the Q and A function and the raise your hand function so you can be heard tonight. Next slide, please. The purpose of tonight, we've talked about it a couple of times, but it's to share information about the budget and the process. It's to provide an opportunity for you all to review the current service priorities and give feedback. You might disagree. We want to hear about that. And if, and if you agree, we want to hear that confirmation as well. And then thirdly, it's to advance the effort to center community need in the development of short and long-range budget planning. Next slide, please. What this conversation is, it's about, it's a chance for, for the public to understand the county budgeting process, to understand the differences between the special fund restrictions, balanced budget requirements, unfunded mandate, general fund prerogatives. All of those things feature into what you're going to learn tonight. And it's just the first step in a long-term strategy to better center community needs in the process. Finally, it's a chance for the community to work through an exercise with your own Board of Commissioners to understand the county's priorities and the county, community's needs. That's going to be very important as you share your opinions with your commissioners. Next slide, please. We, we've talked about this. We're going to go through budget and budgeting process as an overview. You're going to give feedback, and your commissioners can give you their thoughts, and we're going to center the community's needs and budget planning. Next slide, please. Some of you on the call may have come tonight expecting a participatory budgeting exercise. That's a different exercise. We are not doing that tonight. Participatory budgeting is when the community comes together to jointly decide how to allocate public budgets. This conversation is an opportunity for the Board to hear from you all as they develop their short and long-term investment priorities. Participatory budgeting is designed to serve as a forum to advocate for specific changes to the budget. These conversations are intended to help provide the Board insight. It's still the Board's decision, so you're providing them insight and letting them know what you want to see while they consider the direction for the budget development. Over time, this process will evolve and may have more and more and more community input. I would just remind you all that two years ago, we weren't having this process. So as we go forward, the Board is deliberately and consciously trying to hear the input from the community. Next slide, please. And if you don't get the answers you want tonight, your county commission and your county staff still wants to hear from you. You'll see information here from Jack, Jack Leong, who you're going to hear from in a moment, the Washington County Clerk who's on this call, and the BCC, the Board of Commissioners. That's just three ways to get into your county system, to get your questions answered and to participate. They welcome your feedback. They welcome your questions, and they guarantee they will always get you an answer to your question. Next slide. So I'm going to pause here because we're at, at the fun part, the most important part, which is where you get to meet your county commissioners. And I would like to, at this time, introduce and invite the Board Chair, Board Chair Catherine Harrington, to welcome you to tonight's event.
Thank you, Mr. Monday, and welcome everyone, and thank you for joining us tonight. Gaining community input early in our budget process for our next-year budget is really relatively new for us here at Washington County. This is only the second time that we've done this. Last year was our first time, our second time in two years now. Last year, we were fortunate enough to be able to do this in person. We've had to pivot a little bit this year to do this through web applications, but that has the advantage of perhaps being a little bit more comfortable. You get to sit in your own home, and it may possibly be pulling in more people than we were able to have last year. But being in person, I found the conversations were a little bit more intimate, but nonetheless, this is still incredibly meaningful. We are sincere in wanting to hear your questions and your comments as we move forward. Transparency is really important to me in this government work and government role. And so it's why I have tried to advocate that we go through this process of making sure we're connecting with you early in our budget idea and priority formation process. This year, we're embracing this new technique in order to continue our learning. And this year, Jack Leong is taking us even down another layer beyond what we went over last year. So thank you for joining us. I'm thrilled that we'll be learning together, together as your Board, together as a full agency that is working to better fulfill your needs in our community. And at this point, I'd like to turn it over to my county commission colleague, Roy Rogers for District Three. Now, what we've been doing here, last Thursday was our first conversation, and that's where District Four Commissioner Jerry Willie spoke about his priorities. Then on Monday night, our second conversation, my colleague, District Two Commissioner Pam Treese, talked about her priorities. I talked about mine as being the county-wide chair, and tonight we'll get to hear from Commissioner Roy Rogers, my colleague from District Three in your Washington County. Take it away, Commissioner Rogers.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate it. And I guess I'm loud enough, Marcus? Is it coming over?
You're doing great. I could hear you.
Well, thank you first for everyone attending. It's always difficult on nights that are rainy and kind of cozy at home not to attend these sorts of things, but I think they're important. So thank you first and foremost. Thank you also for my other commissioners for being here tonight. This has been a very busy week for us. We've had a number of meetings. This is the third night in a row, and I know for myself, I have meetings at seven-thirty tomorrow and seven-thirty on Friday. So it's an interesting week. My priorities haven't really changed since I have been on the commission, and that is to provide those core services that we're mandated to do either by our county charter, which is a state charter way back in mid-1800s, to what we do in our strategic plan. And so we have some base services we have to do. And I've always said we need to provide that with value. You entrust us with your dollars, we ought to give you value for that money and make certain that, that we spend those wisely. You're going to hear from Jack in a bit that we have a budget of about 1.5 billion. That sounds exciting. But when you really take out all of the committed funds, sort of like your family budget, you have maybe have a vacation fund and a Christmas fund and a, you know, various other little funds. Those are not to be touched. Those monies are for very specific purposes. And so we only have about $300 million, which sounds like a tremendous amount of money. But when you take a look at the core services that we offer, Health and Human Services, our Assessment Division, our Health and Human Services, our land use, you quickly see there's in a county of about, I think the latest census, 620,000 plus. We have a lot of needs. How we have financed changes in the past is always through growth and assessment. We haven't had an increase in tax burden to our citizens for about 20-plus years. I've forgotten the exact date when the last increase in taxes are, but we're very proud of that. We, we try to be very conservative in our budgeting. We be very conservative in how we spend. So we not had an increase, but as you know, the only way you add new programs is either one, tax people more money, and in this particular climate, that doesn't appear to be, you know, a very good thing to do, or you reallocate resources, and we're always looking for better ways to do things. Cutting expenses, I don't think is the ideal unless there are things that are unnecessary. And we, if you think they are, we want to hear about them, but I would caution you that as many people who might say a particular thing is not necessary, you have just as many saying it is necessary. And so that's, that's the nature of the political climate. Am I proposing anything new and big? I'm a little concerned about doing anything different, and I'll tell you why. And it's a little different message maybe than my colleagues and the other meetings have. I've listened to what they've said, and they have some aspirations, and I agree with them all. They're good aspirations. But we're looking, most economists and business people are looking at this being this whole economy issue continuing through probably the third quarter of '21 at least, if not the end of the year of '21. That presents significant challenges to us. We probably are going to see decreases in revenue. People are not going to be able to pay their property taxes on time. We don't have the mega projects in our building like we used to get fees from, you know, the Intels, the Nikes, those who are really building big facilities. That's not happening at the rate that we've seen in the past. And so we're looking at how to downscale some of our internal activities in those areas. And I really, in my heart of hearts, and you can call me a little bit conservative, but I really believe that we're going to do well to maintain the level of services that we do without asking for any additional funds. And so it's not my personal intention to do that. I don't think this is the appropriate time for fee increases. So Marcus and my other colleagues, that, that sounds like a little bit of a downer, but I think I'm a little bit of a realist in this particular market. So that's where I am on this particular budget.
Thank you, Chair Harrington, and thank you, Commissioner from District Three, Roy Rogers. And I have no opinion on this. I am here to facilitate. So, but I appreciate both of your comments very much. And before we go forward and I, and I turn it over to Jack Leong, I would ask Karina Soriano, if she's still out there, to, in case anybody came late, to make them aware of the Spanish Interpretation Channel and any other housekeeping that's appropriate. Thank you. I will scream out into the void one more time. Karina, are you there? All right. Well, I don't hear Karina, so she'll probably be back shortly, and she'll, she'll let us know that. And again, before we get going, I do want to remind everybody about the Q and A function. I do want to remind everybody that the, your commissioners are anxious to hear your comments. And without further ado, I would like to introduce and welcome the Chief Financial Officer for the, for Washington County, Jack Leong.
Thank you very much, Marcus. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jack Leong, as Marcus introduced, and I am your Washington County CFO. Thank you very much for joining us and providing me the opportunity to give you a high-level overview of the Washington County's budget structure, and I am very excited to do that. We have a lot of ground to cover tonight, but in a short amount of time, we're able to stay at a high level. I want to assure you that me, myself, and my office is always open for questions, if even after the session, if you have any other questions. So with that, we'll move on to, move on to the next slide. Let's go over what we are going to cover tonight. We will start off with the budget guidance. Is what are the hard guidances that we actually operate on when we build our budget, when we develop our budget? There are actually both external factors and internal factors that play into that. And the next, we'll talk about the structure of the county's budget. It's how do we do it, right? 1.5 billion-dollar budget. It's not one set of books. It's how do we structure that? And the concept of the types of funds plays an important factor into it. And then we'll move on into our operational areas, which is how the county conducts business. Because the budget, obviously, is a plan to support the operational areas, all the service deliveries that the county does. So we'll talk about that, and then we'll go into a little more detail about how the budget is developed, the budget process itself, and then the chronological order that we're actually following in a budget development season. Last but not least, we will talk about our fiscal year 2021 budget overview. And then again, we will stay at a high level with that, but hopefully that will give you a picture of the county's fiscal year 2021 budget, which is what we're currently operating on. Before we jump onto the next slide, I want to give you the Washington County's mission. Our mission as a county is to provide excellent and cost-effective services that support healthy, peaceful, safe, and sustainable communities, and encourage meaningful participation in community activities and the county governance. Next slide, please. So let's start with the basics on the guidance. There are three general categories that guides our budget process itself. First, there's the Oregon Budget Law, specifically documented in Oregon Revised Statute 294.305 to 294.565. So that's a set of Oregon legislations that guides our budget processes itself. And then we have the county charter and code. That's where our county has made decisions way back when, when we established the charters and the codes about how the county's budget is supposed to be conducted. And then last but not least is the Board of County Commissioners' Directions and Priorities. And that these are the directions and priorities that supports the county's operation on an annual basis. But as very importantly, at the same time, these are the director, directions and priorities that's developed by the county commissioners based on their community engagement activities with all of you, with the community as a whole. Next, we'll talk about the structure. Back to, yes. Next, we'll talk about the structure of the funds. So that is a concept of the county's basic structure is that 1.5 billion-dollar budget is divided by into a number of funds. You can think of that like our household bank accounts, like a separate accounts or checkbook for each individual segregation of specific purposes, specific resources and expenditures. Like Marcus talked a little bit about earlier, is that we may have a separate account for our general spending, like our checking account. We may have a saving account for our reserves and those rainy day funds. We may even have a separate account for, to save up and to pay for a mortgage or car loan or student loan, those areas. So those are all divided in the county's structure into funds. And then the currently county has a total of 81 different funds. And that's obviously for a household, we may only need a few bank accounts. And for a large operation, like the county's business operations, we need a lot of more segregation of a lot of different kind of activities. Last but not least is that we have the, the funds divided into two general categories. One is the general fund, and then the other ones are the special funds. Next slide, please. So the distinction between the general fund and special funds is really the discretionary nature of this funds. The general fund is more or less of a catch-all fund. You can think of that as your general spending checking account. And that's the account where the county's discretionary resources that comes in, and there's associated expenditures that goes out. And then we have the special fund that is used to segregate very dedicated resources and associated expenditures to those specific purposes. For example, if we receive a very special grant that's particularly supporting a particular function, and then that will trigger the county to create a special fund to separately track that revenue that comes in and separately track the expenditures that goes out. And that's the difference between general fund and special fund. As I was mentioning, that the county has one general fund because we have that one general spending account, and then 80 special funds altogether in the county's budget for this year. Next slide, please. Now let's talk a little bit about the county's functional area, the county, in other words, the county's operational area. The county has five general operating functional areas. And from left to right, it goes by General Government, Public Safety and Justice, Land Use and Transportation, Housing, Health and Human Services, and Culture, Education, and Recreation. But those are the five big buckets of the county's operational area that is reflected in the county's budget. Next slide. And in addition to the operating functional areas, the county also have non-operating functional areas. There are three big categories. The number one big category is the capital funds, and those are mostly transportation capital, facilities capital, and the information technologies capital. And then we have the non-operating functional area that includes the county's insurance fund, that service fund. You can see that that's the area where it doesn't necessarily represent a service delivery area, but then it's a very important internal part of the county's business operations. And then we have the non-departmental, which is primarily the county's contingency fund. With that, next slide. So now let's talk a little bit about the county's budget development process. You can see that on this slide over here, it's truly a July to June year-round process. And then we go through this whole year of planning, of developing, meeting, adopting process to get to the next year's budget, the next fiscal year. The county's fiscal year starts on July 1st and then ends on June 30th. So starting from the July prior to the fiscal year that we're working on, meaning that this year in July 2020, we are actually starting to work on our fiscal year budget 2122. So starting from July to September, we actually do a lot of preparation work. This is where the project plan gets made. This is where the budget calendar gets made. This is where all of the internal discussions about what will be our assumptions for next year. What does our future of the economy looks like? What do we anticipate in the revenues? What do we anticipate in COLA? And all of that actually gets into this preparation stage. And then moving on to October to December 2020, that's where the priority setting time is, and then the budget development starting to begin during that time. So within that time, it's where the Board of County Commissioners actually work within the Board and then work with the County Administrative Office to establish the county's budget priority into the next fiscal year. At the same time, the county commissioners is actively engaging with the community to ensure that our budget priority reflects the county's operating priority, which reflects the, the community's need, where the most our needs are. And this is also part of the reason why we're having this community investment conversations right here, right now, in this timeframe, is to add that additional information, add that additional input to the county commissioners' thought process and their considerations when setting this budget priorities. And then moving on to the spring, in January to March timeline. So for this year, January to March 2021, that's where our technical work of the budget development starts. That is where we actually starting to put the numbers together, take and tie, making sure that each bond, each org unit is actually balanced within its own budget, and then making sure that we have all of our eyes dotted and twos crossed on our assumptions, our revenue predictions, and then to pull all of that together into a county-wide budget. If you have seen our budget summary before, it's actually a 350-plus page document that documents all of that thought process into the county's budget. And then into April, that's where we actually pull all of that information together, not only numbers, but also the stories behind those numbers. There are actually very detailed budget analysis into our budget summary document that provides the public the information of each fund, each functional area, and each organizational unit, their budget discussions for next fiscal year, and what are some of the reasons of those budget changes. So that's where we actually pull all that information together, actually publish a book of more than 300 pages into a PDF as well as a printed document for the public viewing. And then that is also where we schedule the public budget meetings, and, and then And then that is also where we schedule the public budget meetings and and then announce that in the local newspapers as well as on the county's website. So in April, we also provide the draft uh proposed budget summary to the budget committee. And then in May twenty twenty one, that's where the public budget uh committee meetings starts. In the middle of May, we have a the budget committee meeting where it's primarily for the staff to provide the budget presentation to the budget committee. And we actually do it in a presentation format to really tell the story of the county's budget priorities, the development uh considerations into next year's budget. Um that is for the benefit of the budget committee who is responsible of reviewing the county's budget um to really do a deep dive into the county fund is that seventy eight percent. Next slide please. And then this provides you the same information. Basically, it's a functional area breakdown in term of a dollar amount and percentage of the total one point five billion dollar budget. Next slide please. Now let's take a look at the general fund uh separated out is how do we invest our general fund? On the revenue side, we have the departmental revenue at eighteen percent, interfund and transfers at twenty three percent, mistip and WCCOS that stands for Major Street Transportation Improvement Program. That's in the transportation area and Washington County Cooperative Light Library Services. Both of those services have very dedicated tax revenue that comes in uh that gets transferred directly to those services. So those two portions make up twenty one percent. And then our general uh taxes are thirty eight percent of the general fund revenue. Moving on to the expenditure side, how are we investing that into the functional areas? General government at twenty three percent, public safety and justice at thirty one percent, land use and transportation at one percent, housing, health and human services at eleven percent, culture, education and recreation at one percent, non-departmental at one percent. Now, a natural question that might come to your mind is that why is the portion in general fund for land use and transportation for housing, health and human services, culture, education and recreation much smaller compared to the general government and public safety and justice? And the reason is actually, excuse me, the reason is actually in those three functional areas, actually oftentimes the services are supported by special fund with dedicated resources that's coming from uh whether grant revenues or dedicated C base revenues. And versus the general government and public safety and justice is traditionally more of the general fund property tax-based uh provided services. And that's why when you look at the total budget for the county, the difference between those functional areas are not that big. And then when you look at general fund, except you can see a significant significant differences in there. It's really be because of the nature of the funding sources of these services uh next slide. So move on to the general government and that is where your service is divided into direct services and support services. Direct services as listed in the table on the right-hand side, it's got your Board of Commissioners, Administrative Office, County Council, County Auditors, um elections, assessment taxation, as well as the act, the Office of Equity, Inclusion and Community Engagement. And that portion makes up the total of the direct services of twenty six million dollars. And there are county emergency management, support services, admin, finance, HR, IT, purchasing, facilities, risk management, fleet, and the central services that is the portfolio of our support services. Essentially, there are the back office support function that provides support to the rest of the county's operations. And then that function totals fifty six point five million dollars. And then this year is a rather unique year in the general government. We also have received received one hundred and four million dollars of a federal CARES Act uh Corona virus relief fund. And that is actually put into a a special portion under the general government uh at one hundred four point six million dollars. And that three portions make up the total of general government of one hundred eighty seven million dollars. The general fund special fund breakdown in this area is a seventy four million dollars general fund, one hundred thirteen million dollars a special fund. And you can see the percentage breakdown is the COVID nineteen CARES Act is by far the largest portion, portion of this mix at fifty six percent. Direct services at fourteen percent and support services at thirty percent. Next slide please. Next, we move on to the public safety and justice portion. And then um starting with a chart on the left-hand side, our sheriff's office is sixty three percent, local option levy admin is seven percent, community corrections fourteen percent, district attorney at nine percent, juvenile at six percent, and the justice court and law library combined at one percent. So on the right-hand side, you have a table that provide you those dollar amounts. We have a total budget in the public safety and justice um at two hundred and sixteen point six million dollars. The general fund special fund breakdown in that area is ninety nine point nine million dollars for general fund and a one hundred sixty, one hundred seventeen roughly uh million for special fund. Next slide please. And then we move on to the land use and transportation. Obviously, the portfolio of the services is listed in the pie chart on the left-hand side as well as in the table on the right-hand side. Building services, current planning, engineering services, long-range planning, uh road fund as well as other are part of this mix of um funding. You can see that the largest portion by far is obviously the road fund at seventy three percent or ninety five million dollars roughly in total. Um and uh that is really just a reflection that road is a very expensive um spending area in Washington County. And that is part of also part of our priority in transportation. So the total budget in this functional area is one hundred thirty point seven million dollars. And that makes up the total of the land use and transportation uh area. Next slide please. And then we'll move on to the housing, health and human services. The total budget for this area is two hundred fifty one million dollars. And then the largest portion is a human services at forty percent and housing at forty one percent. And then the right after that is the public health at ten percent. So aging veteran services, animal services, community development and HHS, which stands for Health and Human Services Admin, uh stands at a much smaller portion in that. And again, the total uh budget in this area is two hundred fifty one million dollars with thirty four point nine million dollars in general fund and the two hundred sixteen million dollars in special fund. Next slide please. Now, the fifth um functional area is culture, education and recreation. So in this mix, obviously, the largest portion is the library, which is the Washington County Cooperative Library Services. And the other portion is a fair complex at ten percent and then parks at three percent, transient lodging tax at seven percent and agricultural at one percent. The total budget for this area is sixty four point eight million dollars. And then with the general fund at two point three million dollars and the special fund at sixty two point four million dollars. Next slide please. So we have combined our non-operating uh functional areas altogether. That's why this portion looks rather large, but it's really three um functional areas combining to one. Starting with our capital, we have our capital in facilities, capital in information technology and capital in transportation. And then we have the non-operating portion and then the non-departmental portion in the county. The total budget for this portion is six hundred thirty two million dollars. And then obviously, the larger part is the capital for transportation at thirty nine percent. And then the non-operating section is a fifty at fifty one percent. The general fund portion of this is ninety three million dollars and the special fund portion of this is five hundred thirty nine million dollars. Next slide please. So obviously, we have covered a lot of ground in um about forty-five minutes and that there's a lot of more information in our budget. Um I'd like to offer you a couple places for additional information, so uh we'll move on to the next slide please. On the county's website, uh that is actually the county's homepage. You can see on the left-hand side, there is a navigation panel that provides the key services and information to the county's information. And then one of the options in there listed off vertically is the county's financial information. There is also a link directly to that page at the bottom of the slide. Uh hopefully, you have a copy of the the slides as well. And then once you click on the link, it will actually get you to the county's budget, the county's financial reporting, the county's cost plan, the county's fee schedule. So all of the county's uh public facing financial information is um landed in that page. So I highly encourage you to check out that page and then uh get more information on the county's uh financial structure. Next slide please. And in addition to that webpage, we also have a Washington County budget dashboard. So for data analysts that's out there or just data, um if you're just curious about using data, we have a very nicely built dashboard that actually provides you, you know, much more granular level of the county's budget, you know, much more visual um perspective. So there's a link at the bottom of this slide again as well. And this is a really nice place for you to jump in, play with the dashboard a little bit and drill into the particular areas that you feel particularly interested in. There's actually a lot of more detailed level information on how the county spend our money, how the county do our budget. Uh next slide please. Uh that is the end of my presentation and again, obviously, we have covered a lot of ground. And then still at a high level, because we only have so much time, I highly encourage you to ask questions um about the county's budget, ask questions right now, but also if you didn't have a chance to ask your question, feel free to reach out to me after the session as well. Uh with that, I will turn us to the Q and A session and see if there's any community questions that I can answer regarding the county's budget process and the fiscal year twenty twenty one budget. Today, but this is where I turn the moderator role back to Marcus.
I I believe that uh someone, there there's at least one hand raised and I don't know how the Q and A has been, but I just did want to reflect, Jack mentioned it, but I I'm I'm hopeful that people that are responding in this part uh will be talking about the budget one-on-one and the budget process. I would encourage you to try to stump Jack because uh you know, the the first two sessions, we heard questions about everything and I would ask people to expand their thinking about it from housing to health and human services. So this section, though, there will be another section where you can ask about anything. This section, we're actually concentrating on on the budget process and what you just uh heard from Jack. So I'll stop talking and kick it to Clerk Moss uh to respond to the raised hands.
All right, thank you, Marcus. We have F A Goldhubber. F I, can you hear us?
Um, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Okay, I want to question, comment, whichever, on the way the budget priorities are set. Um Roy Rogers has been on the board for, I think, decades and has expressed an unwillingness to make any changes to those priorities. So you're essentially working on a twentieth century budget priorities into the twenty-first century. And that's where I believe this process needs to start, not with how are you going to deal with these already fixed allocations, but in looking at where the priorities are and changing them for the twenty-first century. I Washington County vision is to be a model community for the twenty-first century America. And as uh Jack said, uh the mission is to provide excellent and cost-effective services that support healthy, peaceful, safe and sustainable communities. But you can't do that if you're using eighteenth-century institutions that literally grew out of slave patrols to so-called, to provide so-called public safety, which they don't actually do. Um, the sheriff's department, as an example, is primarily tasked with enforcing the criminal code. Historically, the criminal code was written specifically, specifically to penalize people of color, black people, indigenous people and indigent people, many of whom fall in those first two characters, categories, or who are LGBTQ neurodivergent and are disabled. So you can't provide public safety to the public in general if you're using an eighteenth-century organization that was designed to capture slaves and the other root of police institutions in this country is the Pinkerton Detectives who were created to beat people up, who dared to question how they were being paid or to try to organize as unions.
Okay, excuse me, excuse me.
I questioned the whole structure of the priorities. You've set up these lovely pie charts.
Ms. Gold. I'm gonna, I'm just gonna inter interrupt you here and I will ask, because this this portion of the of the of what we're talking about is talking about the budget process. So the your question seemed to have two.
But you're starting from a budget process which doesn't vary.
Right, I understand.
Where the budget is going.
With your permission, I understand that. I just wanted to make sure that we answered the budget process part of your question. And then I'm gonna respectfully ask you to table that because in for uh the later portion where we have the open discussion about virtually anything at all. But I did want, the first part of your question seemed to talk about the structural budget part of it. And that's what I wanted Jack to respond to. And then we will, we will table table that larger discussion, which sounds like a public safety and a priorities discussion about the budget, which we are going to have on this call.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that comment. Actually, I just wanted to add that I'm actually very impressed that you are obviously well-read into the county's strategic plan as well as the county's mission. So thank you very much for staying engaged with the county's budget process.
All right, uh next, Marcus, we have Caroline.
Clerk Moss.
Caroline, can you hear us?
Raised hands.
Go ahead, Caroline.
So I got an unmute request. This is Caroline Lopdel. Does that mean that I go, I don't want to?
Oh, yeah, please, 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 please share, share your question or your comment about the budget process with us right now.
Okay. Um, well, I I am Native American. I've called the cops several times in Washington County. I feel like I've been given good service, but in hearing the speaker, the question just before me, it it raised my question about the budget process, about when there is uh differences or divergence of approach. How does that varying feedback? I know there's a step for input, for input specifically as part of the budget process, but how is that actually analyzed? Is it analyzed by the commissioner that's just for my district, which is District Three? Or does, is there a whole conversation and then you go to Jack and say, Jack, can we afford it? And his job is just to say yes or no? How is that, all of that input and the multiple stakeholder interests like actually implemented into the final budget process?
Thank you, thank you for that question and I will kick it right back to Jack.
Thank you, uh that is actually an excellent question. If uh um as I was explaining, that we're only really able to touch very high-level processes. The county uh budget process obviously has a lot of more activities that goes into that. So I'll I'll make an attempt uh to answer that question, hopefully I understand it right. It's that throughout the year, there's ongoing communications between the Board of County Commissioners with the county administrative office with each department about how do we actually reinvent our county's service deliveries to meet the community's need. Um so that is not necessarily only constrained in the budget process. That is a daily um and weekly operation. Um and then the department, each department actually works toward um how to continue to re-event uh their service deliveries into the community. And then in the end, that is a key question that I got asked actually probably more than a hundred times a year is can we afford this? Can we afford these changes? Can we afford these new programs? And then obviously, I always try to turn my um crystal ball on and then try to predict our future from a resources and revenue perspective as much as I can and then provide my best estimate on, you know, what will be a reasonable and sustainable way to afford certain new changes and new programs. So that that process actually happens on an ongoing basis throughout um the the fiscal year. And then it's also meant oftentimes those discussions are happening at the Board of Commissioners work session as well as the Board of Commissioners formal board meetings. So um that they are actually quite accessible to the public in obviously, our our traditional board meeting way. We're trying to continue to do more community engagement to really get all of those discussions even more accessible. For example, this year, we added the Zoom session for all of our board meetings as well as a work session. This year, we added YouTube uh streaming for all of those discussions. So I I will highly encourage the community members to tune into those um venues and then actually be a part of those uh conversations. And like I said, continue to provide your input and comment. Did that answer your question? Oh, looks like uh Ms. Lopdel has been.
Well, even if Ms. Lopdel is gone, I know she had asked one specific thing. Is it only a single commissioner that decides? And I think you addressed that in your answer, but I just wanted to make sure that was clear that it sounded like you said it was at the work sessions and the main board meetings, but all commissioners participate in that development. Is that accurate?
Thank you very much for that clarification, Marcus. That is definitely accurate. It's uh always a entire board decision um when we make any changes.
Thank you, thank you, Jack. Um I will check with the Kevin one more time, see if there's any more raised hands before or Q and A before we close down this section.
Thank you, Marcus. We have no other hands raised at this time.
Okay, and then I'll make one. And having said that, one just popped up, so if you would, if you would elevate. that individual, I don't want to say the name wrong and then we will take it from there.
Yes, this is Nina Kung speaking. I would like to ask, if it's possible for me to have a copy of the slides. I'd be willing to share with you my email address. If you could get in touch with me and, you know, forwarding the slides to me, I'd like to spend more time to look at them in detail. Went over the slides really fast in the presentation and, you know, appreciate that, but I would like to look at it in more detail. So I'm aware that the county's website has some more information on that. And I just checked the county website, but I do appreciate the slides that's presented here and would like to have access to it for, you know, to look at it more in detail.
I don't know if someone from the county wants to. Oh, that's our interpreter's switch, but.
Marcus, it's Elizabeth and we'll be sure to send that slide deck out afterwards to the whole email list at RSVP.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth. And I hope that resolved that question. And I think also, even though that will be coming out to everybody, I think a lot of this information is going to be put up on the county website. I don't want to overstate it, but I think as this process goes forward, they'll have slide decks and questions answered.
Marcus, we do have a number of questions in the question and answer.
Okay, well, we have time for a few of them and we'll, and then we'll begin the next section, but let's hear a few, please.
One is, could you clarify how CARES funding has been spent? That's a question for Jack.
Thank you. And that is actually an excellent question. So let me navigate to our CARES Act webpage, just so I can provide you some accurate numbers. Obviously, you already know that, that the entire portfolio is $104 million. So just one second. All right. So under the county, it's a, we are working on refreshing our website. So it will become a little bit easier to navigate. Under the county's homepage, if you're able to follow that finance, financial information track, you should be able to in that, in that area, see a section that's called Grants Management. And our CARES Act information is actually saved under there. So within the $104.5 million of CARES Act, I'll just go off the list for you guys. We have $54 million allocated for protect public health. Excuse me, $3 million allocated for utility assistance, public. And then $5.5 million allocated for childcare facilities, court. $1.7 million allocated for houseless population services. $7 million to assist other cities and special districts that did not have, have the opportunity to receive the CARES Act fund. And then we have another $5.5 million supporting the distance learning. $10 million supporting small business support. Stable housing assistant is $6 million. Public mental health and community psyche is $1 million. And then community-based organization support is $5.3 million. And this are operated, this are operated by the county as well as our county's partners, partner agencies. So that, that makes up the entire 1.4, 104 million dollars portfolio. And again, there's actually a lot more information related with CARES Act that, that is both available on our website and that can be shared with the public. So please, if you have additional questions, feel free to reach out to me after the session. I'd be happy to provide some additional information.
I'd just like to add that those are also federal funds and that we have all sorts of guidelines that we have to follow in relationship to allocating those dollars. And the funds must be spent by the end of this fiscal year, or excuse me, this calendar year, December 31st.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. And thank you for your answer, Jack. I think we'll take one more question, Latricia, and then we'll get on into the next section just because I want to make sure that there's time for a more robust and open discussion in the second part of this budget presentation.
Great. So let me just stick with the technical question, although I just, I think there's another one that just came in. Oh, is, is the budget driven by the priorities in the county's strategic plan?
The answer to that is yes, although the county is absolutely giving another effort with our new county administrator, Tanya Angie, that we will be undertaking another effort to give another look of the county's strategic plan. And that all ties in to the input that we actually are hearing from you guys is that the county needs to point our strategies toward a 21st century community. And then we need to operate as a, we need to continue to reinvent our service deliveries into a 21st century government that provides the community services. So it's definitely, the county's budget priority is based on the county's strategic plan as well as how we recognize our mission as a county. So the general answer is yes, and then we're definitely undertaking a huge effort to, to look at that every year and then ensuring to continue the relevancy of the county's strategic plan in terms of a connection to community. I like to see if either Commissioner Treese or Commissioner Rogers had a comment regarding this question.
Sure, Jack. I'd be happy to. And I'd also like to address the speaker who made some interesting political comments. I always appreciate that, but I disagree with them wholeheartedly. We have some 18th century process. We're a county that has been very fair, balanced. We've certainly taken our DEI initiative seriously. That's all new. We have a robust economy, plus jobs position compared to other counties. My comments on budget are that we're, it's evergreen. It really is. But there's only so much money and we need to be realistic. So you either ask people to pay more in taxes or you strip monies from other budgets. And the problem is, and it's, the speaker did say, well, I've been there for a while. There's as many people on each side of those issues as you can imagine. And to make it very, very unfair in comments about we're simply some kind of old school, that's, that's simply inaccurate. And budgets adopted by five of us, we have another five that's on a budget committee. That's all statutory requirement of the ORSs. So it's required and we're always looking for ways to provide new services. We've done that and we continue to do that. I'm just trying to be realistic in my opinion on what we're looking at as an economy. The economy is not robust now. Businesses are failing. People are without jobs. Things are very, very difficult. So that's all I'm attempting to do. And then the truth is always difficult. It's always hard to give a lesson of caution. It's much easier to say we can do everything. And I'm just saying that's not the year for it. And so that, that's where I'm at.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie, for your comments. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut off. Did Chair Harrington or one of the other commissioners want to speak before I moved us along? I'm sorry.
I just wanted to comment on the strategic planning process, Marcus. And I do want to correct you that that's Commissioner Rogers, not Commissioner Willie. Anyway, the, the, the question about the strategic plan is really such a timely one. Yes, the budget is connected to the strategic plan, but it is time for us to have an in-depth review of our strategic plan. And that is on our, on our to-do list for 2021. As, as Jack mentioned, we have a new county administrator, Tanya Angie. We have four commissioners that are in their first term. We have a lot of, a lot of things that we're undertaking, but the strategic plan should be a reflection of what we see as our current needs and our future needs. And myself, along with the rest of the commission, is fully in support of redoing that and looking at it with the lens of today and the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Treese and Commissioner Rogers. My apologies. I am old school, which is why I'm mixing up my commissioners, but I'll, I'll try to be reflective of that the rest of the way. We're gonna, I saw there were some hands raised and I'm, and I know that Ms. Tillman had mentioned that there was still some Q and A, but we're gonna move forward. What I'm, what I will encourage you to do in the interim is to hold your questions and/or put them in the Q and A. It may be something that staff can answer for you real time as we're going through the other, other pieces of the program. And if not, it'll be time to surface it for the general discussion. So I respectfully, I would ask you to, to bear with us and we're gonna try to get through this next section so we can actually hear both in polling and in, in discussion from the county residents. So with that said, I will say this, that yes, Jack mentioned it, your commissioners mentioned it. It's a lot to process, but we have to focus. They said, several of them said it several different ways. Our budgets reflect our values, our choices and our priorities as accounting. And the question came up a few times. Do your commissioners' values align with yours? Do you understand their perspective? Because they're trying to understand yours through this forum. So, you know, a lot of times what we've talked about tonight, these budgets, they, they change as a result of pandemics, recessions. We've had racial strife. We've had fires. We've had a federal stimulus. We've had, and then sometimes they just change because they get feedback from their constituents, from their voters, from the residents of the county. So it's all part of an overall process, which you all, I believe you already understand that, but I just wanted to underscore it here. I think there's been some good discussion so far and I'm looking forward to additional discussion on the, on the specifics, as granular as you want to get or on the larger issues. And on the larger issues, I'm gonna give a couple of rules of the road. But before I do, before I do, I overlook something. I would like to bring Karina in for one last update. If there's anybody on this section that needs to go into the Spanish channel. So if you would, Karina, if you're out there. And hearing, hearing nothing, she might be having some technical difficulty. Hello, Karina?
Yes. Hi, I was on the phone, on the phone call and I was on mute.
Oh, okay. No worries.
Yes, I can go ahead and translate for the Spanish speaking. Bienvenidos a todos. Hay interpretación en español disponible para la conversación de esta noche. Busque en la parte derecha de la pantalla una imagen de un globo o si está usando su teléfono en símbolo de tres puntos también para español. Haga clic en cualquiera de esos símbolos y luego seleccione español. También tendrá la opción de silenciar al que está hablando en inglés. Para escuchar la interpretación en español durante el resto de la reunión, haga clic español. Si en algún momento desea hacer una pregunta o hacer un comentario, puede hacerlo y un entrepete va a repetir su pregunta en inglés para que todos los podamos escuchar. Gracias.
Gracias, Karina. And it's at this time, I wanted to put up a couple of reminder slides. I think they were that slide, yeah, yeah, this one, 34 and 35, 33 and 34. And in fact, before this reminder, we're saying, I would just want people to remember that this is a respectful discussion. We're trying to get to some answers to help your commissioners do a better job and they're trying to get some answers from you about what they need to do that. So I want everybody to stay engaged, be respectful, be civil. I want you to listen to the opinions of the other folks and, but speak your truth. We've heard a lot of truth on both sides, both the commissioner's side and the community's side tonight. I want to keep that up. Please express your values without diminishing those of others. We're, we're here to make progress and move our county along. I'm a county resident as well. I want to see Washington County do well. So again, talking about money and the choices you have to make, they're not easy, but we have to do it. And we might not get every single question answered tonight. So please get ready for some non-closure, but we're gonna answer as many as we can. And hopefully you're gonna provide feedback to your commissioners so they'll know what you're thinking. Next slide, please. And yeah, you know that, you know the purpose. We're gonna share ideas, share comments and try to advance Washington County. So with that said, sorry, don't get old. Your, your vision goes a little bit. But with that said, I want to go right into a preliminary poll. I want us to, and what, the framing of this poll is gonna be, we're gonna ask a question. You saw previously that CFO Liang shared with you, there are five functional areas. And right at the beginning, even Commissioner Rogers mentioned that we have about $320 million of discretionary funding. He shared that some of it's limited, some of it is discretionary. But what we're gonna do is we're gonna hear from you all, the county residents, about the two. There's the two areas you think you want to talk about tonight. We can't go into all five. So what are the two top priority areas for you that you want us to focus on in our discussion tonight? Or, or even that you think are most important for the county? And the framing of it is, I want, I want to get down to one, but first we're gonna go for the top two. And it can be the top two you think that we need to increase budgets? The top two that you think we need to decrease budgets? However you view it, what are the most important things you want to see your county change? So let's get the first poll up here and we're gonna have, there's gonna be two quick polls. We're gonna have a little bit of feedback, a little bit of discussion. And then we're gonna get to one final poll, which I think will get us where we need to go as far as deciding county priorities. So you all know how to work the poll. Please pick two of these areas, whether it's general government, public safety and justice, land use and transportation, housing, health and human services, and culture, education and recreation. You've heard in a couple of parts of the presentation, these five areas. But this is what we're focusing on tonight and we'll give it about a minute for everybody to get their answers in. And then we'll do a quick report out. Oh, answers are still coming in. Thanks. Okay, started to slow down a little bit. Well, clearly, even if we get a few more answers, the top two answers, the number one answer was housing, health and human services. And the number two answer was public safety and justice. But I would like to throw up another quick poll and ask you, of those two, which is the priority item that, that you want your county commissioners to address? Public safety and justice or housing, health and human services? Poll's going pretty fast. People know what's on their mind. All right. So, okay. Still, still a couple of answers coming in. Those last two people might have gone to get a cup of coffee so we could maybe end the poll. And so, so your commissioners tonight, and just so you know, in the first session, there was more interest in housing, health and human services. In the second session, it was more interested in public safety and justice. But for all three sessions, those two answers have been the top two answers where people wanted to have some impact on the budget. So, and again, this is three different regions of the county so far, three different districts, three different groups of people. So, so far, you're giving your commissioners an indication of where you want to go. So with that said, we're gonna have one more exercise after, after this. But before the exercise, I wanted to just do a little framing. And if you would, throw up the, the slide with the county budget versus the household budget, please. I'm blocking my own screen. So you, you heard CFO Liang's presentation about what's on the left, all the five functional areas. And we thought it was important that you see what's under each area. He went through that detail, but it's a good reflection. And the exercise we're trying to get to tonight is to put you in the frame of mind that the government and your county has a finite amount of money that they have scarce resources that they have to share with, and deliver all the county services, products and services. all the county services, products and services. You too, in your own household, you have general expenses, you have housing expenses, you have security expenses, you have medical expenses, all of the things that the county is wrangling with, you're wrangling with too. Now, the way it gets chopped up in, in your household versus a county is a little bit different. I, I tend to remember that one of the charts showed housing expenses for the county being about a hundred million out of a 1.5 billion dollar budget. Well, that's less than 10% of the county's overall budget. And I know I spend more on my housing than 10% of my budget. Some of us, it's 20, 30, 40, 50%, just depending on condition. So how you chop it up is gonna be a little bit different, but it's important that you understand that the same things that you're wrangling with and trying to figure out, so is the county. Next slide, please. This chart, again, this is just a different view of something that CFO Liang already shared with you. This doesn't have the dollar amounts. This gives you, what Jack Liang shared with you is that there are special funds and general funds. But what this pie chart reflects is for each one of the five functional areas, general government, public safety, land use, housing, culture. For each one of those functional areas, it's both, it's the total amount that is being spent by the county, both special funds, those that are restricted or isolated for particular uses, and general funds. But for each one of those five sections, that's the relative percentage that is being spent. And he, and Jack already did explain to you the differences between capital, non-departmental, non-operating, all those insurances and debt services. So that's off the table. We're still focusing on the five areas, but it is important for you to see how your county is spending its money right now. And I want you to see this, and I also want you to see the next slide, if you would, Kevin, move to the next slide, to understand that, that the previous chart, the pie chart, was the five functional areas. This is the five functional areas too. I'm about to ask you to go through one more poll after this, but before you do, I wanted you to remember that each one of these areas, you know, when we're talking about public safety and justice, for example, we're not just talking about the sheriff. We're talking about juvenile justice and, and corrections and the DA and the courts. You know, when we're talking about hous- housing, health and human services, we're talking about everything, public health and housing and disability and animal services. So keep in mind, when you're saying, I want to increase an area, I want to decrease an area, that there's a lot of moving pieces under each one of these areas. So that's, that's the baseline. You already know that, but that's the baseline before we go into our polling. I wanted people to have in mind all the functional areas and everything that comes under them. And so now we're just gonna get to our poll. This poll is gonna be a poll of the five functional areas. And for each one of these, you have five different choices. So for the first one, general government, if you think that we should greatly increase the budget, then answer, then answer that yes. If you think we should moderately increase it, choose that one. If you don't think we should even change it at all, hit no change and straight on down the line. Moderate decrease, significantly decrease. But what I would ask you is to complete all five. You might say lift up housing, lift up health and lift up public safety. And you might, but just remember, every time you increase something, if we're gonna have a balanced budget, which Jack shared with you, we must do, the Washington County must have a balanced budget by law and by statute, something's gonna have to change. So I would ask you all, as you're making your choices, to reflect on what you want to see go up and what, what you anticipate going down. So we'll give, we'll give a, a good, a good bit of time on this. We'll give another half, half minute or, or minute. So I want, I want to have good participation on this, so we can get some kind of indication of, of what the county residents are thinking. And once we complete this survey, just a, a few logistics, it's gonna take us a little bit of time to tabulate it, because we're gonna put it on a different chart for you, so you can actually see what the collective has come up with. But it's during that time that I want you to start thinking of your questions. We will get, we will begin to address the questions that were in Q and A. I also know there were some hands raised, but this is the portion of the program where we want to have not a free-for-all. We want to get a lot of ideas and we want to have a respectful interchange. But this is where you can get your budget questions answered. Also, you might want to know that your CFO, Jack Liang, he's still on the call. So if there's something about the budget process, Budget 101, Jack can answer that, and he may answer some of your other questions along the way. So is that, yeah, the survey might not be cut off, but maybe we can end the poll now, and we can ask the team to, to work on tabulating those results and putting that up. And then I will open it up, and I will, I will start with Latricia and the Q and A, because I, my understanding is that there were several questions that were posed that, that might need some answers. And we'll start there, and then I will come over to Clerk Moss for, for the hands that are raised.
Okay. There were a couple of questions about the investment the county makes in policing and public safety as compared to housing, health and human services. I think in one question, the question was about the rationale for the county spending three times as much on police and prosecution as they do on housing, health and human services. Somebody could take that one.
I don't know if that is a, a strict budget answer or a philosophical commissioner answer, but maybe, Jack, if you could tell us how the budget process comes to be, you know, even if something comes to you and it's one-third and three times as much, how do you discern at the CFO's office, or, you know, just help with the process, or, or if there's another phase where you listen to the commissioners first and then begin the process? I don't know, but any, any illumination you can provide there would be helpful, I think, for that question.
Okay. So maybe, let me make a attempt to do some fact check first. First of all, our entire public safety and justice budget altogether is 216.6 million dollars. In comparison, the housing, health and human services is 251.3 million dollars. So actually, housing, health and human services is the larger part. And that doesn't even account for the CARES Act, CRF fund that we're managing this year is primarily toward public health. So I'm guessing this question may be derived from the general fund allocation compared to the, in terms of those two functional areas. And as a part of my presentation, I explained that there are certain county services that's traditionally being supported by the, the general, general fund revenue, like property taxes or the general fund collective fees. And there are other services that's traditionally supported by state revenue or federal revenue that comes in into a special fund. So the county, when they look at the total budget as a whole, we actually look at all of our revenues and make sure that we have a service portfolio that meets the community needs in a more equitable way. And I actually, from a total budget perspective, I can't say that we're, we're investing more in public safety and justice than housing, health and human services. It's actually the other way around. So hopefully this provides a little more clarity on the county's community investment. I, I also like to look to our commissioners that's on the line to see if there's any additional comments or feedback on that.
And I think maybe more valuable relative to this conversation would be to have the commissioners talk a little bit about how they weigh out funding for policing and public safety, as well as for housing, health and human services, and what are your considerations there? And that, I'm trying to encapsulate multiple questions that have come in about that.
This is Chair Harrington. I, I don't want, I, I want to offer that my colleagues should feel free to contribute first, because I don't want to squash anything they may want to say by virtue of my position as chair.
Thank you. I'll jump in. It, you know, it's, it's always difficult in these budgets. And I appreciate those who have been asking questions and their concerns and they, we don't have a lot of time, so we don't get a chance to really look into each other's heart and to have too long a discussion, because people will draw conclusions on sound bites, and that's always very, very difficult. The, the board, I think, has been thoughtful. We hear from a variety of, of folks, are all of our values exactly alike? Well, of course not. No, no two people in life are exactly alike. But we value housing. We've made that a priority. We've supported two Metro bond measures that added that to their strategic plan as well as ours. We understand that policing is important, but I've had personally, many people say that they wish there were more policing. And I've heard many say to me, they wish there were less. If we were to go back to a, an old model, we could almost get down to say we'd put every one of our services on the ballot and let the public decide, but that's not representative government. And so we try our best to balance the needs, wishes of each and every one of them. But in my particular case, in, in the area of community safety and policing, I, I don't think they have enough money at times. Now, could it be allocated differently? Of course. Do I agree that we're gonna hear about, and we have been hearing about, a program out of Eugene called Kahoots and others. We're looking at that. That's a mental health issue. And I spoke two years ago that mental health was one of our major issues. Too many people in jail with mental health issues, too many folks who don't have services. But we just don't have the kind of money unless the public wants to say defund. And I don't choose to, to use that word. And I think our chair made a very good comment the other night at Commissioner Treese's meeting about, we need to define that term. And what does that mean? As I said in my opening comments, we, the only way we can get additional dollars is to either raise it through taxes or reallocate. And some of the comments that I hear, people are saying is reallocate it. That's, it's a difficult process. We need to look at that. I'm certainly not opposed to taking and saying we need more public health. In fact, I'd be probably the first one to stand up and say we do need mental health as a, as a number one criteria. But this is a, a diff- very, very difficult year. We have about 55 people on the, on the line. I represent about 160,000, 155,000 in my district. So there's, obviously, I'm not talking to all of them right now, but I, I can tell you, I represent about 80% of the population in my district and cities. They have very different views and different ideas as well. And so I, I just want, want to tell you, the hydraulics of all of this is really complex, because you have people with a lot of different views. We're trying to weigh that very carefully. So I'll stop.
I'd like to, I'd like to jump in here too. Thank you, Commissioner Rogers and Chair Harrington. When I'm finished here, I'll pass it to you. I think that what's important to me as an individual is to make sure that we are listening to our community. I think that the voices in our community over the past several years have, the voices that weren't heard are being elevated more and more. We are, and my goal individually, and I, I believe strongly that the commission's goal is to listen to all those voices with particular attention to those voices that haven't been heard before. This issue of budgeting, this issue of reallocating funds is something that is very serious and will take a lot of time to make sure that we are, that we are doing it appropriately, that we are healing back the onion and looking at within our public safety, where are we addressing behavioral health issues with our teams that go out with police, with our, with our sheriff's deputies? Where are we doing those things? How can we, how can we push that along? How can we look at training? How can we, bottom line is, how can we meet the community needs and, and be clearly understanding what those community needs are? What we've seen from a societal viewpoint has been an awakening. It, it, and it's not, it's not really an awakening. It's, it's a, it's a social dimension that's been here for a long time. It's a social dimension that has found a louder voice and a very important voice and a voice that we need to respond to. So, but I do believe that we need to respond to that voice. We, we need to respond to those needs in a, in a way that we can make sure that we are addressing the issues of everybody. I was elected for District Two, and in District Two, we are, we are, we've got the largest percentage of unincorporate, urban unincorporated Washington County, but we all work for the entire county. We were elected by the, by the residents in, in our respective districts, but we work for the county. And our needs are pretty diverse across the county. So it's, it's just, it's absolutely essential that we're listening to everybody. I fully respect the comments that have been made, the look at reallocation of funding to clearly understand what our community needs are and then be responsive to those needs. That, I believe, is and should be and is the job of the commissioners. So this type of interaction's critical for us to do our, our work, to be responsive to those community needs, and then to put into place the changes, the, the, the evolution, if you will, of how we, how we meet all of our community needs. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Chair. Sorry for the soapbox, but I, I believe strongly in what we're hearing from our public and incorporating that into our process.
Thank you, Commissioner. Am I off of mute?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I'm just sending a text to staff to try and help with one of the Q and A items. Thank you, everyone, for being here. I'm sorry I had to drop out a little bit earlier in order to go thank the Planning Commission for some of their work. I want to start by letting you know that this is the kind of forum that we were striving for, one where we would hear your input. We've been, I've been seeing it through the Q and A and the responses, and I thank you. I'm very grateful for getting your input. I think what you're seeing here is that we have a, a variety of approaches here on your five-member Board of Commissioners. Certainly those of you who heard me on the campaign trail all throughout the, the latter part of 2017, and then through the election cycle of 2018 in May, and then the runoff in November, you heard me talking about reorienting the Washington County budget on the principle of community need. And so the very kind of things that you're suggesting are the kind of things that I can relate to, and I appreciate hearing more from you about those. For example, some of the changes in our fiscal policy, you can see it right in our budget document, because we adopt the fiscal policy each year. I have not yet been successful in getting a change for further support for health and human services and housing. We have a fiscal policy, adopted policy that says we only provide those services to the extent that the state, state provides grant funding. In isolated cases, this, the board, current board and previous boards have provided a little bit more funding than that, but in order to avoid other costs, such as, the prior board invested in, and that includes Commissioner Rogers, and I thank him for investing in a mental health center, the Hawthorne Walking Clinic. But it does have limited capabilities because of the limited funding that we put into that thus far. But by investing in that, the county avoided needing to build another jail, which would have cost that much more. But we all agree, all five of us, that a jail is not the place to put someone who is having a mental health crisis. And we are getting more and more informed by our staff about this need. It's why this current board It's why this current board provided direction to our staff that, yes, we do support their looking into investing in a triage and treatment facility. So we are making progress. Is it fast enough? Probably not. By virtue of what the mental health situation was prior to COVID, and now it's increasing crises. Another aspect of change, the prior board was pretty comfortable with building new things. They invested in the construction of the Wingspan Event Center. It now exists, so as a member of the board, I am obligated to support that to make sure it is successful in its business plan. But it means that we have taken your public assets. We, the portion of the gain share funding was bonded out for future years. That means that revenue is no longer available to address community need. Instead, the hope is that it will attract more travelers here to stay in hotels and create more of the hospitality jobs, albeit lower paying hospitality jobs. So you can see that there are some good things going on, but not necessarily enough. Now, some of you have suggested that we defund the police or reallocate funding from the Public Safety and Justice Department, the larger fund, into things like Health and Human Services. And I think Commissioner Rogers spoke earlier about some of what we have to do is based on requirements from the state, and he's right about that. But there are also aspects where we are a little bit removed from the sheriff's budget. For example, if we were a city commission, a city council, we would have more authority over the police budget. We don't quite have that same granular control with the sheriff's budget. So I know I'm getting long-winded here, but it did entertain many of what the feedback that you're giving us and that the board is navigating its way through. This is a journey. We will continue this work together, and I thank you for participating.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair, Chair Harrington. And before we get to the next question, well, there's two things I want to say. One, the the survey you just took is just about ready, so I'll share those results in a minute, although I think we have time for a couple more questions. And two, I forgot to remind people, and I don't think I really needed to with this group, but I wanted to make sure that everybody remember we want to hear your comments. Please be brave, even if you're reticent to speak in public. Please be brave and make sure that your commissioners know what you're thinking. Now, I did notice something in the chat, so I'll say one quick thing. I don't think it's particularly brave to be profane in the chat room, and I don't think we have to go there. I believe in free speech. We can, we can do that. Any any comment is acceptable, but I think, you know, I've often gotten frustrated with government officials. I've gotten frustrated with these government officials. But we can still be civil, and we can try to get to a conclusion that helps our county move along. So I just wanted to say that. The second thing I would say is we, I want to dive back into the questions, and I will ask Tricia if she's ready with the Q and A question. I did see one hand raised, but I wanted to go back into the Q and A before that.
Clearly, a lot of questions and concerns about getting the right balance between public safety and health and housing and human services. I'd like to shift a little bit. I have two questions. One, about how the climate crisis is considered when deciding on our budget, and there's, you know, obviously a lot to think about in terms of decarbonizing our economy, protecting our homes against wildfire, investing in renewable energy and locally produced food and manufactured goods. So how do those considerations weigh in in terms of budget development? And then another sort of unsung part of our budget is around culture, education and recreation, and so hoping commissioners can touch on those elements of the budget.
I will defer to the commissioners.
May I provide a little background information just regarding the county's sustainability effort? Just because that is a part of the Department of Support Services, which is the department that I belong to, is that the county has a longstanding tradition of pursuing sustainability program within the county's operations, and we are actually have a very dedicated portion of the budget, not at the fund level, but at a program level, specifically for the county's sustainability effort. And one of the new things that we actually have added this last year is that within our purchasing department, we have joined in on a clean diesel consortium to actually formalize and then starting enforcement effort within Washington County as well as the greater Portland area to enforce a certain emission standard for diesel fuel using engines that is being used in the industries. So we actually definitely take the clean air. And then the environment and climate changes very seriously here at the county. In addition to that, the county's Community Development Program has a very robust wood stove exchange program to actually get, help the community to replace their traditional wood stove with a modern, less air quality taxing systems. So they are actually embedded in multiple corners of the budget, and it's really hard to use a short answer to sum them all up together. I would definitely encourage the community member to reach out to me, and then I'd be happy to actually open a book of our budget summary to point out where those investments of the county are. With that, I'll give it to the commissioners for any additional comments.
So this board approved last year investments to make all of the county buildings run on alternative energy sources. So that was something that we, a decision we made in 2019. This county, for a long time, and Commissioner Rogers is familiar with this, has participated in the regional efforts to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by our largest sector of contributions, that's the transportation sector. So Washington County, over the last couple of decades, has worked hard to ensure that there are more travel options for people to make improvements in various corridors so that people can connect up with public transportation, light rail, you know, trails, sidewalks, you name it. There's also an effort that's underway right now, the State Climate Adaptation Framework, that we will be required to do some work with here in two, in 2021 and in 2022 and 2023. So more good work to continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. And I'm gonna stop us right here. We have about oh, about twelve or fifteen minutes left in the program. One, I want to share the results of the poll that you took, and then we'll have a little discussion at the end. And I wanted to save a little bit of time for you commissioners to give you a a parting shot, but at this time, I would like to, and actually, let me ask in advance for people's forbearance. Tonight has been a very lively discussion, and I think there's still a few more lively comments yet to have. So if you don't mind going a few minutes over, we can do that, but I wanted to make sure you had the results of the poll. And just to see where you all, you residents, we county residents feel about where the commissioner should be going. Hopefully, this is a self-explanatory presentation, but you can tell from the results that sixty three percent of folks believe we should decrease significantly, public safety and justice. And and when you add it, add together the sixty three, yeah, as the comment said, nearly three fourths suggest a significant to moderate decrease. And for the culture, education and recreation, a big chunk, you know, almost half suggests moderate to significant increases. Nine out of ten suggests significant to moderate increases in housing, health and human services. So what what you've done here, and the other two areas have kind of flowed in the middle. But what you've done here, in just a quick poll, is share with your commissioners that generally, this group, you know, this microcosm of thirty eight folks in the county, think that, you know, reduce some public safety and justice, and I will remind you to reflect back, it's not just the sheriff, it's not just the courts. You'd have to go down into each subcategory and figure out what that reduction would look like, or at least the conversation around the reduction. And the same for for housing, health and human services and culture. Where would you make the increases? There's a lot of departments under there. So this gives your commissioners a tool. It's it's a, it's a line in the sand. It's a stake in the ground that lets them know generally what you're, what you're talking about. But the way you're going to sway them the most is what I want to get in before you leave is join these budget committees, join these special fund committees, get involved in the process. Come to the board meetings, come to the revenue meetings. You can have a whole lot more impact throughout the year other than, and I'm glad you're here, but other than answering a quick poll or two. So I'm gonna stop there. And then I'm gonna ask, we're gonna go back to the question. So I'll ask Tricia for a couple more if there's anything in Q and A, and then we'll go to Kevin for the for the raised hands.
Okay, there's a question here about influence that the board can have over the Hillsborough Airport's impact on air quality and noise.
Chair Harrington's hand is raised on that. You are muted, Chair Harrington.
That's an area where we don't have influence or control. The the airport is the airport. The Port of Portland owns that airport. If you want to interact on that, you really need to go address the Board of Directors for the Port of Portland. The airport itself is located in the city of Hillsborough as well. So there are a lot of federal requirements that and regulations that allow the airport to operate, and at this point, I'm, I'll just summarize it by saying, no, this isn't an area where, over the years, board members have learned that that we don't have any influence or control over.
Thank you, Chair, and maybe the staff can put a link to the port's public comment connections. The next thing, I actually, I want to give Tricia, Latricia, a break and ask Clerk Moss to start reflecting the raised hands, if you would, please, Kevin.
Thank you, Marcus. We have two hands raised. I will go back to F I for her table question from earlier.
Oh, very good. Thank you.
F I, can you hear us? F I, can you hear us? Not hearing, so we'll move on to Mariah Will Be Nuts, and we will come back to.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Mariah, can you hear us?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead for up to two minutes.
Thank you all. I wanted to take this opportunity to talk about my concerns for community safety, and I, as many have discussed today, we need to bring what community safety means into the twenty first century and really think about what makes us safe. We're facing a global pandemic right now where housing is especially a very stark need for community safety. Mental health is definitely being impacted, of course. Public health and things that contribute to crime, which is what we think of often when we hear public safety. Poverty, systemic inequalities, those are exacerbated by policing. And it is our responsibility to have our budget reflect our priorities, and when we see that there are systems that are exacerbating the problems that we call public safety, that is inappropriate when really what is keeping us safe is the housing, the human services. So I really want to encourage us to invest in our community and consider what is keeping our community safe.
Thank you very much. Do any of the commissioners wish to respond to that comment?
I do. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mariah, for your input. I really appreciate it. I just want to share something that I learned today in attending the AOC Annual Conference and a session on police reform and public safety improvements, where all of us, every county and the state legislature finds itself is that there are needs to modernize and improve the Oregon Public Safety System. I learned today that seventy eight percent of our property crimes are, as a result of people who are addicted to drugs and alcohol, who are are turning to property crime as a way to gain resources in order to sustain their habit. So it costs us more to deal with that downstream effect of property crime as opposed to invest more in substance use disorder prevention and treatment. So that's one of the things that we need to look at, not only here in Washington County, but also all across the state. Much of what we do in public safety is in compliance to various state law and requirements. After all, the sheriff is elected as the law enforcement officer, and so he has to respond accordingly to the needs of the community as laws are broken. But he is a learning sheriff. He believes in continuous improvement. He will welcome our support to ensure that community needs are met without sending every single problem to the sheriff's office and law enforcement to deal with. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. Kevin, I thought you had had a couple more people in the queue.
Yes, we do, Marcus.
Before we move forward, I'm sorry, I wanted to make sure other commissioners, are we okay? Other commissioners? Commissioner Rogers, Commissioner Teresa?
Yeah, no, I think it's fine, and I appreciated the speaker's comments. I think that her goals are our goals. That's the struggle is how do we get there? That's the issue, and so it's always a challenge.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Kevin. Go right ahead.
All right, Marcus, next up, we have Pedro.
Good evening, Pedro. How are you tonight?
Good evening. I'm doing okay. I just wanted to ask that the commissioners bring more information on these state mandates that every time we reference like reallocating money from the Public Safety and Justice portion of our budget to Housing and Human Services, we get answered about, we get these odd comments about state mandates for these funding things, and it really, we haven't gotten a straight answer on whether or not the county commission, the UU commissioners, like approve the budget or can influence it, but then these, yeah, I would just like more information on these state mandates, where it comes from, how we can influence this sheriff's budget or the public safety budget more, and then also to your comment, Catherine Harrington, about the sheriff learning that we, and yes, he is a public official, so we are looking forward to getting him out of office. He destroyed any sense of like public trust in that office when he worked with ICE and destroyed the sanctuary city agreements that we had here in Oregon. So like, we could care less about whether or not the sheriff is learning because he's already spit in the face of all Latinx people, all migrants of any of any race in this county. So, yeah, just reallocate the funds from Public Safety and Justice, and I'm looking here at the Washington County adopted budget summary, and even under the portion that says Public Safety and Justice, there's things here like the Sheriff's Office Administration, law enforcement, jail, district attorney, juvenile courts, and some grants situations. But then, when we look at housing, health and human services, it is a long list of services that are provided. So yes, we do fund more money in housing, health and human services, but it's also because we provide but it's also because we provide more services to more people, direct services that actually, like Mariah said, prevent crime and prevent harm from happening in our communities. While when we just fund public safety and justice, we are funding for these armed cops like Ryan Alden and these jails and these district attorneys that ultimately don't provide the safety that we deserve. And all that comes from housing, health, and human services. Emergency fairness, developmental disabilities, human services, aging services, animal services, public health, metro affordable housing, air quality, like, it's, it's so disproportionate.
Excuse me, Pedro, and thank you. Thank you so much for your comment. I know, I know we're at the end of our time, but I wanted, there were a couple of hand raising. If people bear with us, I wanted to give a couple of minutes, but I also wanted to update you. I just got a staff update based on your question, Pedro, that they're going to be checking with CFO Liang to prepare information about state mandates versus, versus the actual limited discretionary fund. So in response to your question, staff let me know that they will be getting that information, and I assume they will be posting it appropriately on, on the website. So I will ask Kevin, I, because I know F.I. is back, I think. I wanted to check and see if you had anybody else in the queue or anybody.
F.I., can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
I'm sorry about that. The text, I apologize. I wanted to.
You're coming in and out just a little bit, so it's not as clear as it was before. But please, please, you know, carry on.
I wanted to go back to the conference. Because we really need to look at how we're out if we want to do that. We are often hysterical.
Excuse me, I'm, I'm sorry. I don't know if it's true for everybody, but we can barely hear you.
Is that better?
Yes, a little bit.
Sorry. If you really want to change how we, how we conduct, I think, it's a little bit.
No, I, I hate to be this guy, but maybe you can type it in the Q and A because we absolutely cannot hear you right now, and I apologize for that, but we, we just can't hear you.
Let me try one more thing. Is this working better? No. You got it off? No. No.
Okay, thank you, Clerk Moss. So where we are is at the end, and we're gonna leave the, the Q and A open for a moment. But I'm anxious to hear the comments from our earlier commenter, but I did want to give our commissioners the, the final word tonight. The one thing I will say, I said it a couple times, but for everybody who's still on the call, please, there are ways to plug in to Washington County. There are ways to plug in to your commissioners. There are ways to get information. Even if you only remember one number on there, call the CFO, call the board clerk, call, call the board of commissioners or email them. They will get back to you. So we're gonna, we're gonna hear from the commissioners, and if, and if we still have the urge, we will try to get to those raised hands or those Q and A things. But I do want to be respectful of people's time because we're already a couple moments over. So I would ask District Three Commissioner Roy Rogers, who was the sponsor of tonight, to, to share his, his closing thoughts with us, if he would.
Sure, thank you. These are always interesting conversations or difficult. We have a variety of matters that we deal with, and we continue to deal with challenging issues, everything from funding activities that people would like to see funded, to maintaining the level of service that we have. We have always valued taxpayers' dollar. We've tried to place those in the hands of very capable people at the county, and I think we have an excellent staff. Where do we go forward? We're gonna continue to struggle as the county grows. It was much easier when it was 250 or 300,000 people. There wasn't the request for the variety of services. And as we grow, we're going to have the call for many, many more times intervention or interaction with what we do. So I applaud you, Marcus, I said that to you the other night. You've done a masterful job in conducting these things, trying to keep them on balance. At times, people get a little testy. We defend our position, and I defend my colleagues because I think they're doing a fine job, and we try to defend ourselves, and the public may misinterpret that. But we're, we're there for the right reasons. We're not there to make money and to do things that are not in the public interest. But it's, it's going to be an ever-growing issue of how do we provide services to a very diverse group of folks from various parts of the county? We have rural, we have urban and incorporated, we have cities, very different needs, very different issues, and very different approaches. And so if it sounds like it's complicated, it is. The only more complicated in my job is the one the chair has. She's gotta, she's gotta wrestle with the four of us, plus all of those things that I've, I've mentioned. So it's, if you ever want to spend a day in hell on earth, just go into her office and watch, take her, take her schedule there and, and stay along with her, and you'll find out what, what it's like. But I do appreciate it. I don't take any, any, make any issues with anything anybody said and misinterpreting or interpreting how I believe. I, I just think that the strength of our board, and I'll say this and quit, is our diversity as well. If we, if we all thought alike, you would have a very unbalanced answer. So we come from very different backgrounds, very different business orientations and public service orientations, and we work as a team to do a very balanced approach. And so I'll, I'll stop and just thank everybody for attending.
Commissioner Rogers, Rogers, who is not Commissioner Willie. Commissioner Treese?
Thank you for just a quick minute here. I, I want to thank our staff and the people that have worked hard to put this program together so that we, we have the opportunity to, in, in this age of pandemic, to at least communicate in two dimensions with our, with our public. So thank you. I also want to say that I respect the passion, the thoughts, and the positions of everybody that's spoken tonight. It's, it's important that we listen to everything, so thank you for that. The last thing I'd like to say is, we are in a pandemic. We are in a very dangerous situation. Please take good care of yourselves and your family. Do all the things that our public health department asks you to do, wear your mask, keep your, your gatherings small. And with that, I, I know I'm grateful for the public that we serve and for the opportunity to serve all of you. So thank you, and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Commissioner Treese. Chair Harrington?
Yes, thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening and for the robust exchange of questions and answers and discussion. Like I said earlier, this is just the second time, second year that we've gone about seeking input early in our budget process and going beyond just the standard have a, a public hearing. So I really appreciate how hard everyone is working to inform us, but also to get more familiar with your county budget. After all, we, as an agency and as a board, are here in the service of you. So thank you so much, and onward ho we go together. There will be one more of these sessions on Saturday, as Mr. Mundy highlighted earlier. And there will be a report of all of this feedback, including all the Q and A that will be provided to the board. I'm hoping that we'll have an opportunity, COVID surprises pending. I'm hoping we'll have an opportunity to receive that report by the end of the year. But don't worry, it will be publicly available on our website. We will highlight it on social media and do all we can to ensure that you continue to be on this budget journey with us. Thank you again, and please do stay healthy.
Thank you, and, and I have one more thing. I wanted to check if Paige Walker is still with us, because that hand was raised. And since this is a community forum, I wanted to give the last word to the community, if Paige is still there. And before Paige lifts up Clerk Moss, I would ask that anybody who is still on the call, there looks like there's 46 of you all, immediately when this call ends, you should receive a, a survey about tonight. Please give us your opinions, good, bad, ugly, indifferent, that your county commissioners want to know. So Clerk Moss, if, if Paige is still there, we would love to hear.
Hello, I think I may have unmuted myself.
You did.
Terrific. Thank you, everybody, for, for hosting this and participating in this today. I wanted to just say that, two things, is one, I hear, I, I embody the fact that you all want to hear the voices of the people. And I really just wanted to reemphasize that people are not coming to this with a political agenda. They're coming with lived experience. And I think it's really important for us to understand, it becomes political when it gets to the government and the governing. But the folks are really coming to you with lived experience. Having also said that, it does seem to me that if there's going to be really substantive change, then the public needs to be more involved with the strategic plan. Because that is really the songbook that this whole thing is being operated from. And so I'd really like to know more information about how we can be more involved in that process so that we can rewrite the song. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your comment, and I don't think there's a better way for us to end than a community comment like that. So thank you all for coming out tonight. Thank everybody on the staff and the commission who showed up. And we will see you all again on Saturday at 10:00 a.m. Thank you.
And Marcus, just, I'm sorry, I never do this, but this is Elizabeth. I did just want to bring forward that on Sunday, November 22, it's Grand Ron Restoration Day. There'll be a celebration of tribal sovereignty, and we hope you all have a chance to acknowledge that.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you. Thank you for sharing that. And, and good night to everybody. I see the crowd is easing off now.
Thank you, Marcus and team. Job well done.